Good evening and welcome to the Town of Southwick Select Board Meeting for October 17th, 2022. Those in attendance, myself as Chairman Russell S. Fox, Vice Chairman Doug Mogulyn, Clerk Jason Perron, Administrative Officer Carl Steinhardt is on Zoom, Administrative Assistant Robin Scholak is here. I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have a volunteer, David?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the first thing is a public comment. It's for anyone that would like to make a statement to the Select Board, this would be your opportunity. They ask anybody that's in the room, please stand and state your name and address. And we'll do the room first and then we'll go to Zoom. Is there anybody in the room that would like to make a public statement? I see no hands going up, no nodding, no nothing. Zoom, Mr. Mogulyn. I don't see any, sir. No, no, sir. Okay. Then we are going right to, we've had a cancellation, we were going to be meeting with Eversource Power concerning the project, I think I've mentioned it before, because we had a preliminary meeting, a project for a solar array off of Feeding Hills Road. But we will reschedule that. Apparently, they were not prepared or didn't have all the necessary people to attend. So that will be in the future. I'd like to acknowledge payables warrant number 2311B dated 10/4/2022 in the amount of $306,298.17. Acknowledge payroll warrant 2309 dated 10/11/2022 in the amount of $264,031.76. I need a motion to accept the minutes dated 10/3/2022.
Seconded.
Rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the executive session minutes dated 10/3/22.
Seconded.
Okay, rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye. Oh, okay, we have to amend it. We need to make a change on the rule call vote. We have amended. Wrong name. All right, and we'll pass them down. You got the other one? You know what I'm looking for?
It's in that pile.
Okay.
Bottom.
Wow, there it is. Thank you. All right.
I have a big question whether or not I actually read this.
Good check. Good, good call. Okay, we're going over to the action folder. And the first letter is from Richard Spanowitz, Deputy Fire Chief. Come on out. You have sent us a letter concerning allowing Russell Anderson, who will be retiring as our Fire Chief, and you will be taking over the new position on November 6, 2022. And you'd like to have him in a consultant role, so the floor is yours.
Certainly. So this is not something new to Southwick. Chief Anderson had made the same suggestion for two retiring members this past summer. And the idea was that they would be able to continue with the department in an emergency role so that we could still have some of their knowledge, especially resources for driver training as well, and cultivating some of our younger potential officers and working with some of the newer officers. So Chief Anderson would take on a role very similar. And most importantly, being able to work in his role with the Communications Dispatch Center. So as we move towards regional dispatch with Westfield, which will hopefully be wrapped up very shortly, I think it would be critical that he still maintain some involvement in that, as well as grant writing, which he's been very successful at. It is a very hard thing to jump into new. So I think it would be great to have him as a resource for that. And for any other non-emergency event that may come up, we even made the suggestion of becoming the department photographer. He has passed in that as well, too. So I think any one of those roles certainly would be beneficial to the town.
Okay, Carl, this is something we'd work out with Labor Council and come up with some sort of agreement.
Yeah, this, this is consistent. It's just a payroll change order notice. He's still retired and so forth. So this is consistent with what the outgoing chief did for some other individuals. So it'll be a, once you approve it, it'll be a straightforward payroll change order notice. And you know, he'll no longer have benefits and eligibility and all of those things go when the person retires. That'd be, so.
Okay, discussion?
None. No, sir, I think it's a great idea.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
The, the other thing was the chairman, following this is the transition, Russ's last date is, it's an odd number, I believe, because of a payroll period. Rick, so there's, there may be a memorandum of agreement coming that has him retire a day earlier because of payroll cycles and the, the issue with how the county pension board works. So that's going to be coming to you at next meeting.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Same thing, 24th the next meeting or 31st?
24th.
It is 24th, okay, so good, thank you.
All right, the next thing I have on here is discussion of holiday party. This is something we haven't had due to COVID for the past two years, three years. Just something where what we do is elected and appointed officials, kind of a thank you. They can bring their spouse or significant other. We do it in the auditorium. Get, try to get an assortment of different foods from local vendors. You know, and we put on some music and a movie on the screen for background. And it's kind of like a thank you. For, because we have a lot of board and commissions that don't get any stipend or anything like that. And we certainly want to thank our staff for all the hard work they do. So discussion.
We should do it. It's been a couple of years. I think we can pull it off.
All right, and the money comes out of the selectman's gift account, so it doesn't, it isn't a taxpayer funded thing.
Tentative dates or specific dates?
That's what we could kick around, or we could appoint somebody such as Robin to work out the details.
I get back from Las Vegas on the 14th.
I was thinking the 16th is looking promising, right?
The 16th is usually, yeah, we usually do it that.
Is the Civic Fund doing there?
I'll check.
You know, because we don't want to compete with that, because we normally do it on a Friday night, right?
Yeah.
Civic Fund, do they do that on a Saturday or Friday?
I don't know, it was on Friday last time, it was a while ago.
Something, yeah.
I think it's on a Saturday.
I think it is, too, because you decorate during, right? Yeah, I think you're right. Okay, all right, Robin, you mind being in charge of that?
Or no?
And do you have, still have that sheet? I had made a sheet a couple of years ago to kind of keep track of who's doing what. If I can find it, I'll send it to you, so you have it.
Okay, I mean, I have my own sheet that I've done, but we can compare them together.
Yeah.
Intensive, we're talking about Friday, December 16th.
People go pick up different stuff and whatever, whatever needs.
Hold them, deliver.
Even better. Well, that, yeah, a lot has changed since then. More places deliver than ever before.
All right.
Okay, we've got a plan. All right, next is an invitation to the Veterans of Foreign Wars. They hold a spaghetti dinner over at the American Legion Post 338. It's this Wednesday, October 19th. Dinner starts at 6:00 PM. The cost is $7 for veterans, $10 for everyone else. Proceeds will benefit the K-9 Police Department, K-9 Unit. So we have several events going on that night. You know, the Rotary is also having their vocational awards night at Tucker's. So at least we've notified people of this. And I think Lieutenant Banish sent out an email to everybody also. Okay. All right, authorize the Town Accountant Contract Amendment Number One. Laura Fletcher, our Town Accountant, has now officially secured her certificate, excuse me, Certified Government Accountant Certificate, Certification.
Yep, three-year process.
Right, and when we had discussions with her, when we brought her on board, that, that was one of the goals and that she would be rewarded for her three-year efforts, so.
And Mr. Chairman, this directly relates to that study I had given you that was undertaken by Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito about the development of finance officers. If you go to have them come into a community and they already have the skill sets, that's one thing. But many communities have to develop them over a number of years. And they have to secure their certifications and gain their core competencies.
Right, and this isn't something new. Southwick has been a big promoter of this. We did it with Linda Carr. We've also worked with our Director for Assessment, Sue Gore. We even do it with the Highway Department with their licenses. So I think it pays off big dividends. And the stipend is $1,000 per year. So I need a motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor, rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Do you have a original copy or?
Yes, it's already on the table.
Oh, that's right, okay, I think we can, we can all sign it out there. Okay, next is again, animal control. People are very generous when it comes to our animals. We're talking about donations totaling $2,655. They want it placed in the Southwick Animal Control Medical Gift Fund. It should be noted that a gift card in an amount of $1,500 will be held at the shelter for use. Ocean State Job Lot, $1,000 check, $1,500 in gift card. Helga Hayden, $30. Carrie Lackey, $25. Terry Anne and Andrew Pigmentaire, $100. And thank you to them, very generous. Each week, it seems, we're getting more money for the animals. So I need a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. Okay, next thing is, we've announced this. This is the Southwick Civic Fund Hidden Heroes Celebration, which is going to take place on Tuesday, October 25th, which is next week at 6:00 PM at Southwick Regional School Auditorium. It's open to the public. Police Chief Bob Landis, Fire Chief Russ Anderson will join the Civic Fund President Joe Didi and Jim Putnam in leading the community's efforts to say thank you to all our essential town employees. So this is something, right at the bottom, Ben is open to all children and out-of-town families are warmly welcomed. All right, the next thing is the sign-off of the state election warrant for Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. We'll have precincts 1 through 3 here at 454 College Highway, Southwick, the Town Hall. We'll be electing Governor and Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General, Secretary of State, Treasurer, Auditor, Representative in Congress, Counselor, Senator in the General Court, Representative in the General Court, District Attorney and Sheriff. There will also be four questions that people hopefully have done their homework so that they're prepared to vote on those and not read everything while they're voting to speed up the process. Early voting, I believe, begins this Saturday, the 22nd. You know, and people can go online to the town website to see the hours posted for early voting that our Town Clerk, Treasurer Collector, Michelle Hill has posted. She also has a sign out in front of the building notifying people for early voting. So I need a motion.
Seconded. Seconded.
Okay, rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
No one vote? It's democracy in action. All right, we have a letter from the Town Librarian. After discussing with the Board of Trustees in the Union Stewart, she's writing to form of the library holidays schedule as follows. They will be closed on Saturday, December 24th, Monday, December 26th, because Christmas falls on a Sunday, so the legal holiday for them is on the 26th. And they're looking to have combined their two half-days by union contract, half-day before Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, and take off Tuesday, December 27th in lieu of that. And they'll also be closed on Saturday, December 31st and Monday, January 2nd. So this is something, Jason, that we do every year, especially when it runs on a weekend or Friday or Monday, so. Motion?
Seconded.
Okay, rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, if you want to notify them, we have no problem. Next thing is from Charles Dunlap, our Emergency Management Director. This is the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan that they're looking for the chairperson to sign along with Mr. Dunlap as Emergency Management Director. And this is basically the whole purpose of what we're going to be doing in case of, God forbid, we have an emergency, whether it be a tornado or hurricane or a freak snowstorm like we had in 2011, Halloween 2011. Any, any natural disaster, a plane crash, anything like that, kind of spells out the different things. I know you're on the Local Emergency Planning Committee, which is good because of your law enforcement backup. So you understand the chain of command and all the responsibility that goes with that. So looking for a motion to approve the chairman to sign off on this. This is something he does annually.
Yeah, last year I did send him a note to update the appropriate titles of the Select Board on page 2.
Okay.
This also, I think it was updated, not sure what year it was, that it was updated to include other hazards such as cyber attack and stuff like that, that are also very real probabilities in this day and age. So, so move with that change.
Seconded.
Okay, rule call, rule, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. All right, okay, we're going to authorize Mass DOR, Department of Revenue, 23 Sewer Rate Relief Grant Submission. This is something that is done annually. We're not talking big dollars here. Usually, it's just a few thousand dollars. Is that correct, Mr. Steinhardt?
That's correct, sir. It's usually somewhere between like $1,200 to $2 grand or something in it. It just goes into the revenue account that helps the Town Accountant and the DPW Director undertake the financing for the sewer division.
Okay, so I need a motion, so move.
Seconded.
Rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Okay. All right. The next thing here, and I don't have it right in front of me, but is approve a contract for Michelle Hill, our Treasurer Collector Clerk through fiscal 25 as part of an office reorganization. This is something where we've met in executive session to discuss the study that's being proposed for those offices. We're one of the few left that has those combined offices. Mr. Steinhardt even gave us an email today. What's going on in, what was it, Deerfield?
Deerfield, yeah, Deerfield has submitted their special act of the legislature to try to undertake the reorganization by splitting the positions, because there's only two or three towns left in Massachusetts that are structured this way. And as you go back to your meeting about elections with the Finance Committee in August, and then since then, it's become evident that we do need to undertake that reorganization study. So you signed and authorized at a previous meeting with Eric Kinsfer to start that review process, which he will be doing. So, so that's underway, and this is our way of ensuring that we still have the person with us through this transition, sort of like what we did with the dispatch function.
Correct. That's for the sewer. Application. Right, and we've discussed this again, not to be repetitive in executive session. We know the situation, it's a very challenging one. At the same time, as the study is going on, we want to make sure that all the hard work that Michelle Hill does in the meantime is compensated. I think most people realize that we have a shortage in that department now because of people leaving. And Michelle is putting in a lot of extra, a lot of extra time. And once we completed the study and we go to implement it, there's obviously going to be changes. And so we want to make sure people are rewarded appropriately for their service to the community. So need a motion?
Seconded.
The second, second. Rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
All right. We're going to new business. Conservation Commission Funding, apparently we have a funding issue. They're running low on funds for secretarial. So, I mean, you, you were approached by Mr. McWilliams, Chairman.
And I brought it to Carl's attention, because obviously we need to make sure that they have the support that that commission needs, and that funding mechanism is a little different for that board versus others. I wanted to make sure it got properly vetted and make sure that they have the support they need as a commission to keep doing what they're doing.
Right, I believe in the past, you know, it was, it was funded through the fees they collected, but are enough fees there to get through the year. And certainly, it's an important board where we need to make sure that all the minutes are kept properly, you know, because of all the decisions that are made there. So, Mr. Steinhardt, suggestions?
Well, I suppose what you could do is you could look at valuing, I mean, right now, when Jean works, she, she also does hours under the local permit program, which is fine, because that's the other, that's the other fund source from the dock fees and things of that. So that covers her other hours, and that funding is under the jurisdiction of the Select Board. So on this one, you would probably have to come forward and do a stopgap measure in the order of a finance committee reserve request, or you could just charge it to Town Hall part-time till a future date at a town meeting where you might transfer funds through a supplemental appropriation. So those are your two options. But this is not a new issue, it's been pointed out for three or four years during budget processes and things of that nature. So this, you know, it's not a surprise.
All right, so I need a motion to come to some sort of agreement to be worked out by the Chief Administrative Officer and the Town Accountant as to funding.
Seconded.
All right, rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
All right, next thing is to review the tax increment financing agreement. Mr. Mogulyn is abstaining from all this, and we'll be leaving the room. All right, Jason, this is then negotiated out. This is similar to what we've done with other TIFs. We worked with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, our attorney, their attorney, the CIO, myself, and members of the Wally Computer Associates. Getting right down to the nitty-gritty, what it basically is, is there would be an exemption on any improvements to the property over 10 years. Year one being 90% exemption, year two an 85% exemption, year three an 80% exemption, year four a 75% exemption, year five a 70% exemption, year six a 50% exemption, year seven a 40%, year eight 30%, year nine 20%, and the last year 10. Okay, and then it would be a full of value. There is obligations by Wally Computer Associates and any other signatory to this agreement to the number of increased number of employees. That's part of the agreement that needs to be committed to. So the agreement can be null and void if, in fact, some of those agree that covenant isn't, isn't met.
Right, the Commonwealth monitors these agreements to make sure the benchmarks are made, and the Assessors Office also works with them.
Correct.
This particular document is, has been worked out as a structured agreement. It's used by this agency in other communities. In this particular draft has been pre-approved by the General Counsel of the Mass Office of Business Development.
Correct. Bottom line, still has to go to the town meeting. That's why we're having a special town meeting on November 15th. So it fits into everybody's schedule, fits into Wally Computer's schedule, fits into the state's schedule. You know, it doesn't, you know, we don't like to have special town meetings, but I think this is important where we can have a very good business that has been a good partner to, in the community, to expanding their operations, staying in Southwick rather than going to another, another community, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this, this would be, if approved in November, it would be put on as a agenda item for the State Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, which is the state agency that has to approve agreements like these.
Correct. So with that, any questions, Jason?
No, I'm very familiar with TIFs, you know, working in municipal government over there. So they use them all the time over there. And I've read what I could of this one, and I mean, they make the pockets sense.
Right, again, it's up to the voters. You know, I will make sure everybody understands it is an up and down vote. It's, there's, there's no amendments on this. It's either yes or no. So with that, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I will second the motion. Rule call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. Okay, and special town meeting, November 15th. There will be two articles. Article one will be the Tax Increment Financing Agreement between the town and Wally Computers Associates, Wally Properties, Inc., or any of its successors and interests for property located at 18 Hudson Drive, Southwick, Mass. The TIF agreement, which the TIF agreement provides for real estate tax exemptions and exemption rates scheduled set forth therein, approved at an Economic Development Incentive Program, EDIP, local incentive-only application submission to Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council. Copy of the draft and Copy of the draft and TIP agreement is on file with the town clerk. Okay. And we will be in the gymnasium at Southwick Regional School. The time will be six P M. Article two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to take all necessary and appropriate action. To establish and to maintain in accordance with provision of chapter one sixty-four of the general laws. In accordance with rules and regulations or the Department of Public Utilities and Department of Telecommunications and Cable. And municipal lighting plant, for all purposes allowable under the laws of the Commonwealth. Including, without limitation, the operation of a telecommunications system and any related service or to take any action relative thereto. Mr. Morgan, you want to explain what we're trying to achieve here?
Sure, so the article two is in accordance with. The mass general law to allow the town of Southwick to establish a municipal light plant, um, which would. Give the town the rights to site and locate equipment on poles throughout town of Southwick and access to the right of way. Um, throughout the town, so this needs to go in front of the town meeting. Twice in two successive calendar years for it to become effective. So the timing of the special is opportune because this would allow the voters to take a pass at this and say, yes, this is a good idea. Subject to more information coming out of the high-speed internet sub. Um, and then it would potentially be on a May town meeting warrant for a second vote, so. If, uh, either one of these two, uh, votes were to fail, then we would be done and we would not be able to offer, uh, municipal. Broadband inter- internet in the town of Southwick, so this is an enabling piece of that legislation to, to begin the process of. Establishing the municipal light plant, which would then be the contracting authority to provide broadband internet. Um, in the town. And this is similar language, actually identical language to what's been used in other, uh, communities throughout the Commonwealth to. Allow, um, muni broadband throughout. The town and other, and other towns and cities throughout the Commonwealth.
Okay, need a motion to approve the, uh, special town meeting warrant.
Uh, I, just out of an abundance of question, I'm not going to vote for the warrant, obviously I'm a huge proponent of article two. But I've abstained from any and all doings with article one, so I'll step aside.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
I will second that motion, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Doug Morgan abstained.
Okay, alright, we'll see everybody, November fifteenth, six P M. Southwick Regional School in the gymnasium, in the gymnasium. A little bit different.
Could you say that again, is that like the class of seventy-five?
I believe that gymnasium was there, yes, yes.
They weren't using a peach basket for the hoops though, at that time, right, they had already gotten proper nets by then.
I'm not even going to dignify that with a response. Alright. So. I threw away my copy here. Yeah, wouldn't I, no, I found it, okay, alright.
For someone I have like six.
Yeah, oh, I know what I was doing, I was going back to the, uh, the TIP agreement, just so, like, a, a few things to mention. This is for the property owner to construct an eighty-four thousand eight hundred square foot onsite facility on the property. Uh, with a projected estimated value of nine million dollars for hard and soft construction. Um, and, uh, to create twenty full-time jobs in town over a ten-year period. Alright, old business, uh, North Pond, uh, that's still ongoing, uh, Dave McWilliams who. Been meeting with the chief, uh, going over different policy, security policies. Developing those or, or getting some from the state that we can modify to our own. They're, uh, still submitting any incidents, the state wanted them to re, uh. Submit any incidents to them so they can keep a record of it, so they can see where, where the areas are that they need to. Help, uh, work with our local conservation commission, uh, and, uh, it will be some, uh. Tree trimming. Uh, down by the shoreline, uh, during the winter months. To help reduce the number of, uh. Uh, ropes that are attached or that could create a dangerous situation. So that'll be, uh, something that'll be done during the winter months. So, other than that, we'll be following up with meetings and, uh, throughout the winter. And hope that, uh, by the springtime, we have a good plan implemented and ready to go. So. Town Hall, the bids have gone out, we received them. And now we'll be in the second stage of accepting the bids. Is that correct, we have our building in ground, Director David Sutton here.
Who, who let back with only two, two bids on it, but both the companies were good companies, the, the one in North Adams is a good outfit. Uh, they got, they've done a lot of municipal projects that I've looked up. And, uh, I haven't got any negative feedback. Okay, that's a good sign, uh, looking forward to seeing the project moving forward.
Right.
And talking over with, uh, with Candy, he thought it was a good idea to move forward and it was a decent number, is what we expected.
Yeah, Spencer.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Right, and of course, our other challenge is the fact that, uh, we still have not begun working on a roof. Uh, material seems to be a problem.
Concept of hurricane weed is prevalent throughout.
Right, so we've been thrown a little bit of a curve, it's a challenge. Uh, but we still, uh, we've accepted a bid, the bid is still good. Um, we'll see exactly when they get the material and when they exactly start, uh, the roofing. You know, I know that we were trying to. We were trying to get everything done, you know, so in coordinating with the HVAC project, um, so. It's, it's, it'll be a challenge, but we're going to get it done.
A good company doing the HVAC, lots of contractors keeping up with them, this is outstanding. It was a great team getting ready to move in, so I'm a little over the rate.
Well, if we timed the holiday party in this roof project, we could have actual snow in the auditorium. I'll be here all week.
All week, okay.
I wasn't charging the badge.
As long as nothing happens to the peach basket, we'll be happy.
Baskets along.
Alright.
I'm just staying out of it today.
I've used to her.
You were in the military.
Carl, but, yeah, something, Carl?
I, uh, did we get to the, uh, town hall HVAC design?
Yeah, we were, we just did that.
Okay, obviously, we are waiting for Andy's numbers, they are looking at the, uh. Um, North Adams, uh, heating as the, uh, preferred vendor. According to Ken Beck, and that's based upon all the design changes that were made during the winter that, uh. David and Arthur had wanted, and of course, we'll, um. We may end up needing some additional funds left over from. Other items that came in under budget under the ARPA projects.
Correct.
So, uh, Andy's putting that together and we would probably have to act on that by next week.
Alright, do you have a ballpark on that?
Uh, not yet, I, I mean, I think his original estimate was a little under one-five. And I don't have the bid on me, but it was up near one-six or more. So we're going to have to accommodate for both of those issues as well as a contingency.
Alright, so you're going to be making a recommendation for the next meeting?
Yeah, A- Andy's working on the, uh, the documents with me and we're going to reconcile it with, uh, with what we've already done for the roofing project.
Okay. Alright, you had a question, Doug?
Yeah, since, since David's here, I know we had talked about this previous, but I don't know if anything occurred yet, we had ordered. The UV equipment to go inline in the existing HVAC.
Yeah.
It's done.
Yeah, it's all upstairs.
It's all upstairs and up and running?
Mm-hmm.
Fantastic, thank you. So, why don't you tell folks what that is, because we.
It, it, it's a, it would, put me on the spot here with that, with the fancy terminology of it all. It's a UV system that literally kills everything in the air, cell filters as it goes. And, uh, it cuts back on filter changes, it could, you know, kill COVID nineteen, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-seven when it come out with that one, and maybe assist the thirty-two. Um, it's all low voltage, it's all done with lights. And it's transferable to the new system.
Great.
That's the most important part.
Exactly. Yeah, that was part, we had allocated money from that out of the early rounds of not ARPA, the pre-ARPA funding, whatever that was. Right. To purchase that equipment, it took a while to come in, but we finally did come in and now it's installed in the town hall.
What's nice about this new HVAC system that you put in is that the deficiency in the building, just from, by design when they did it in ninety-six. They used to use a gap opening between this floor and the suspended ceiling as a return button. Which is illegal, actually, and it's the worst thing in the world for your system, but that's all being sealed up. Well, this, this helps to bring a lot more air quality back to the building. You're not constantly sucking in all the dust that's generated between these floors, which is, believe it or not, quite a bit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Alright, uh, next thing, the next, uh, sewer, uh, meeting with, uh, on the IMA with the city of Westfield, I believe it's Friday. That town will be a Zoom meeting, is that right, Carl?
Uh, let's see.
Thanks, David.
I, I believe it's Thursday, Mr. Chairman.
Alright.
But, uh, it is this week.
I, yes, you are correct, Thursday at eleven A M, okay. So, town council, yourself, um, Randy, myself.
Yep.
And we'll let you, we'll update you next week. Uh, we can eliminate the request for the high-speed internet article for the town warrant because it's been accomplished, so we can cross that off. Uh, you can eliminate the, no, we, I take that back, that's, I was getting the wrong thing, I was getting it mixed up with Charlie Dunlap. So, review of the, uh, planning board comprehensive, comprehensive impact statement handbook. Um, marijuana. We can keep that.
I sent a note to council today, uh, the gentleman emailed me this afternoon, ending where his post-agreement was, I said I didn't think we're. At that point, but I did ask council to provide the latest template, given all the regulatory framework changes that have happened. To send as a draft to the app, to the proposed applicant.
Okay, and we've already taken care of the special town meeting, so I think we can remove that, just FYI. Uh, we're still working on the town website, uh, meeting calendar. Yes, going back and forth, okay.
Uh, I'm looking for some input and someone's going, going to be giving me some input, so.
Okay. Alright, so we're still working on that to try to achieve something. Um, okay, uh. We're back to looking for an assistant C O position, uh, the person that we. Were going to offer the position to, the one person we felt was the, uh, best qualified candidate has, uh. Decide to stay in their present employment. So, one of the issues, and we talked about it before, was the, uh, salary. And we agreed to increase that, so what I'm going to suggest to the board is that we re-advertise and redouble our efforts. Uh, because, I, there's, I think there's the people out there. Uh, and there's people that I'm sure they're going to apply. That don't have any of the certifications, but I think that we really need to find people that have at least one or two of the certification. Other than that, it would take several years before they have certification, i.e. for procurement or, uh. Uh, any, any of the other supporting things.
Right, I, I think, I believe I gave you something about what, um, South Deerfield was doing or in that nature. What their price points were, which were higher than ours, so you're, you're clearly being outbid. By other municipalities going for similar positions.
So. I need disagreement?
No disagreement, nope.
Okay, so Carl, we got the green light to, uh. Go forward, it's very disappointing, I, I thought that was going to be a great candidate.
Hmm.
Um, had, had cert- some certifications already. It was experienced with, with municipal government, it actually worked with the town of Southwick. So, it's, it's unfortunate, but, uh. Alright, that's all I have, so Carl, back to new business, do you have any new business for?
Um, well, I just want to let you know that, you know, I've signed off on all the, um. The vendors to, uh, move the channel fifteen office.
Yeah.
You know, because that is the space where, um, this other position being recruited will be. Situated within the floor plans, so we're just, um, shifting some things around, so I just want to let you know, we are, uh. Uh, doing everything we can to, uh, uh, modernize our channel fifteen function and. While that's going on, this other, uh, movement upstairs, uh, to the other space will, will help facilitate that.
Doug, new business?
Uh, no new business.
None, okay, uh, Carl, old business?
Uh, no, I think I'm good right now, sir.
Old business, old business, I just have two quick things, uh, one, last Thursday, uh, we had the first master plan community visioning. Session, which, um, Jason and myself were in attendance at. Um, and they had another one on Saturday, I was unable to attend, and I haven't got a chance to review the video yet to see how, uh, how that went, but. The Thursday session was, uh, very good, very well attended, uh, both, uh, remote and in person. So hopefully that'll be valuable input for, uh, the master plan, uh, subcommittee. And I also want to thank and congratulate Mrs. Quay. Um, she organized with, along with the Concom, a, a cleanup over at the Sopanowskis this weekend to clean up some areas around a couple of ponds over there. Um, like, as I mentioned, I was out of town, unable to attend, but I heard that there was fifteen or, so people that showed up to pitch in and. Take on that task, so congratulations to them and thank, and with our thanks, and that's all I have, sir.
Jason? No, I just, uh, want to remind everybody about the, um. Rotary Vocational Award, it's going to be Wednesday, at six at Tucker's. Uh, tickets are still available, we have the, uh, uh, PFWM having their spaghetti. Also the same night, same time, uh, at the American Legion. Uh, I think that's about it that I can think, oh, we got the Spirit Walk.
Oh, yeah.
Coming up, you need to make reservations, uh, the telephone number has been in the newspaper, it's been in. Southwoods, it's been on the town crier. Um, I don't know if it's on our town website or not, I don't believe so. But, uh, that's, that's always, uh, uh, if you haven't attended, it's, it's, it's an educational, uh, event, you know. And it's a family-friendly.
Not at all scary.
Except for Mr. Morgan.
Well, yeah.
Well, it's, it's also by appointment, isn't it, Doug?
Yeah, you gotta sign up, you gotta sign up for it, so, gotta sign up for it. Um, because you do move around in, in groups, so I like to, I like to, uh, handle the group.
Yeah, they come around in groups and, um. Mr. Hamburg is there and he, he tells quite a tale, whoever you ask him to play, because he has all the facts and stories beyond belief.
You, you're talking about Lee Hammer?
Yes, Mr. Hammer.
Didn't he graduate?
He couldn't have.
South Lee High School.
Don't tell me what year he was.
He graduated nineteen seventy-five.
Really?
Yes, he did.
Well, I walked into that one, but I tell you what.
It is a great tour, I remember Beth and I took a nice tour, it was a beautiful day, and we met up with. Lee and some other people and a, and a person doing a Massaholcomb. Um, you know, wearing the, the dark black suit there with the big top hat. Beautiful day, beautiful time, great people.
It is, that's great, and, and to be honest, I played, um, Amysah Holcomb for a few years now, and every year Lee comes over and gives me fifty additional things to know about. Amysah Holcomb, so it's, it's new every year for me, it's great, um, but it's a great event and, um. If, if the weather's nice, it's a great day to see and appreciate some of the work that's been done by Gene Thoreau and.
Oh, God, yes.
Restoring some of the headstones around the cemetery, and they've removed some of the older overgrown trees to, to make the space brighter and safer. Um, the old cemetery. The old cemetery, old cemetery truly is a, a neat. A neat place in our town.
Yeah, it's also much easier to read.
Oh, yeah.
The, the headstones now, you know, that they've uh. Cleaned them. Uh, it's amazing. Uh, so, okay, so I see no more. Old business, no new business, I don't believe there's any need for an executive session, so with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Morgan, aye.
Jason Perron.
Alright, good night, we'll see you next, next Monday.